Okay, this is the February 10th meeting of the zoning board of appeals via webinar. Your image or voice may be recorded for the record. Let's just go around and say who we are. I'm Lynn Ryan. Jim?
We already dealt with this, but yeah, here.
Okay, Danny?
Yeah.
Virginia?
Here.
And I see Amy. Pat?
Yep.
Keith?
Yeah.
And Susanna? I'm glad I didn't try this at home. I was thinking of it. Who else is online with us, Keith?
In the audience, we have Dennis Minnick, Janet Lamy, Mark Rhodes, Paul Haberty, Peter Wheeler, and Seth Donahue.
Okay, thank you. So I'll declare the continuation of the public hearing for substantial modification to the comprehensive permit for the Capes of Berlin at 58 South Street. Did the petitioner have anything he wanted to say?
I think he's got to be made a panelist.
Yeah, Keith, do you want to?
Who am I promoting?
Mark Rhodes, Seth, Mr. Haberty.
And that would be it for now, I think, yeah.
Paul Haberty, you said, yeah? Okay, the three have been promoted to a panelist.
Okay, are there any one of the three that would like to speak?
I think, what, Paul Haberty's here, so I'm going to let him speak.
Okay.
Evening, Madam Chair. So after the last meeting, Attorney Questle actually made revisions to the draft Homeowners Association. We got those last week. We got them back to her the same day, and those have been submitted to the board, so I didn't know if the board wanted to review those.
I think that would be a good idea. You want to tell us the changes that you made?
Amy, would you like me to go through them?
Yes.
It's up to Lynn.
Yes, Mr. Harity, you can go ahead.
Okay, so on the first page, Amy had suggested a change to comprehensive permit rather than definitive plan, which we accepted that change. Also, on the first page at the bottom, under Article 1, Name of Trust, she had suggested eliminating the word easement from Capes of Berlin Homeowners Association Trust because it covers more than the easement areas, so we agreed to that change and eliminated that. Again, in 2.1, where it stated definitive plan, she suggested the change to comprehensive permit plan. We agreed to that change. In Article 2.1, she had added septic system maintenance and testing and suggested that the board wanted information with regards to what will be covered with that. So Seth provided the information under subsection 4 that states the individual septic systems shall be maintained in accordance with the Massachusetts standard conditions for secondary treatment units certified for general use and general use certification issued by the Department of Environmental Protection. Each septic system shall be inspected annually with results provided to the property owner and the Berlin Board of Appeals or their designated agents.
Or Health. You said Board of Appeals, it's Board of Health.
I'm sorry, the Board of Health or the designated. Section 2.2, vegetated buffer, again, a change to comprehensive permit plan. And there is a marginal question from Attorney Questle. Check with the board to see if they want more detail, if this is enough regarding the vegetated buffer. I guess that's really a question to the board.
Okay, I'll give them an opportunity when you finish.
Okay. Section 2.3, a couple places where definitive plan was changed to comprehensive permit plan. Section 2.32, Amy, it's adding in accordance with the requirements of the comprehensive permit, which we agreed to, so that has been added. 2.4, again, changing definitive plan to comprehensive permit plan. And then in section 2.4A, there is a question, parking on the private way, is it allowed? And actually, Mark, I would ask you if you know the answer to that question?
Parking on the private way would be allowed other than during snow swamps.
Okay.
I would, I would think that would be okay, you know?
So if that's the case, we have to go back to the fire department. Are they okay with that?
No, okay, then no parking on the private way is allowed.
Okay, good.
So did we want to add something in here?
Yes, we do, we do. Okay.
Try to figure out where the appropriate spot for that would be.
Yeah, we'll find out. I just wrote a note, so we'll put it in, in a spot.
And then for section 2.43B, Amy, out of the language, a cost borne by the owners association in accordance with the fee schedule provided herein at exhibit A. And we agree to that language. Also, in subsection B, there was a marginal question as to whether snow storage areas are designated on the plan, which they have been, and we resubmitted those plans to the board that indicate where the snow storage areas are. Subsection C, another change, again, from definitive plan to comprehensive permit plan. Subsection 7 on the following page, added the language in accordance with the fee schedule provided herein. Again, we agree to that language. So on Article 3.1, the top of page 6, there is a notational question from Attorney Questle. And Mark, I have a question for you as to whether or not this language is acceptable. So Attorney Questle stated, we need a designated amount of trustees, and one must be from an affordable unit, and she suggested language. There shall at all times be a board of trustees hereunder consisting of three natural persons, as shall be determined by the vote of the owners. One trustee shall be an owner from an affordable unit, unless the address is lot numbers unless there is no owner of an affordable unit willing to do so, as confirmed in writing by the affordable unit owner. So again, Mark, is this language acceptable to you?
Yes.
Okay, so we can add that language.
I'm sorry, what section was that in?
That is in section 3.1. And it's at the top of page 6, or might actually, I think it's still the top of page 6. Working off of two drafts, the one.
Yeah, I know, me too. It's hard.
Okay, because I don't see it in the draft that I have.
Well, the marginal notation is included.
Yeah, it's a comment.
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, you have to open it up as a word. Sorry.
All right, I'm looking at it as a PDF.
Yeah, I know. It has to go in as a word, and then you'll, you'll see the comments.
All right, thank you.
All right, so the next thing I have is under Article 4, 4.1. And Mark, this is really a question to you, I think. The officiary shall be the owners from time to time of the lots shown on the plan. The lot owner shall each have a 1/12 interest in the common elements and other trust property, and shall be entitled to a 1/12 vote each, subject to change should the additional lots be added to the association. There's no.
No, that's.
Correct?
Yes.
All right, so this language can just be stricken. And then, again, at the bottom of 4.1, Attorney Questle suggested adding the language, in no event shall the beneficial interest of a lot owner paying a lesser percentage pursuant to the fee schedule provided herein be lower than any other beneficial interest, and we're We need to add language regarding the testing of septic systems. So we have included some draft language that adds including but not limited to the maintenance and testing required for the individual septic systems. Amy, I don't know if that satisfies your concern there or not.
Well, I'm just getting to it. I did read it, and I thought it was fine.
It includes all the plowing and all that stuff, right?
Yes, it does. So wait, wait a second. I'm also working off of two documents. So we're on, we're on the authority to assess, correct?
Correct. Section 5.2, yes.
Okay, so here. And then over here. Yes, that's fine.
Okay. And then in the next section, Amy had stricken, 1/12 of the cost of maintenance of the common elements shall be borne by the owner of the lot, subject to change should additional lots be added to the association, and we were fine with that change. We accepted that.
Right, because I added pursuant to the fee schedule.
Yep.
So anywhere it said 1/12, I changed that to pursuant, pursuant to.
You also added pursuant to the fee schedule at the very bottom of page 9, so that is Section 5.6, you asked me to fix the numbering, so I did that. 5.6, subsection 2, Attorney Questle had requested to add a specific provision, our septic system maintenance and testing. So we included, all septic systems shall be inspected annually. Any deficiencies noted during system inspections shall be remedied by the property owner. Amy, I wasn't much sure if that satisfied your concern or not.
So that's something I want to talk about with the board.
Okay.
So if we could, you know, make sure we, make sure we go back to that.
Go and circle back to them.
What page is that on?
Page 11.
Say it again?
11. So the next change I have is on page 13 in section 7.2. Having to do with the termination of the trust, Attorney Questle had suggested some significant changes. So she added, no termination of this trust shall occur, and this language she's adding, while the comprehensive permit is in place and the comprehensive permit plan does not adhere to the town of Berlin zoning bylaw, additionally, no termination of this trust shall occur, absent a unanimous vote of all lot owners and the approval of the board by a majority vote. Any termination of the trust will automatically be a substantial modification of the comprehensive permit pursuant to 76056.051. Again, we were fine with those changes, accepted them. Next change I have is on page 15, under Article 4. And here, I think we do need to do a little bit more work. So in 9.1, subsection 2, following the direct negotiations, the parties agree that no resolution can be accomplished then, and Attorney Questle, out of the parties may agree to participate formal mediation such as by REBA dispute resolution. Subsection 3, added, agreed upon by the parties, or if no agreement, shall be selected by the executive director of REBA. Subsection 5, pursuant to the fee schedule provided herein. Subsection 6, wanted to strike if, or if one party refuses to meet under subsection 92 or mediate under section 93, this dispute shall be arbitrated by REBA dispute resolution. The party shall agree to an arbitrator, and if no agreement, the executive director of REBA shall, following consultation with both parties, accept an arbitrator. So my only concern with these changes is if there was a determination to use a different provider that, rather than REBA. And some of this language is very specific towards having REBA dispute resolution make a determination. So I think we just need to tighten that language up a little bit.
Okay, but why, why do we have, why are we, why are we?
So you had suggested in 9.1, subsection 2.
Yeah.
Parties may agree to participate in mediation such as by REBA dispute resolution, when the original, you know, really settled on just REBA, and I agree, you know, it shouldn't have to be a specific provider.
Correct, right. That's, that was my point.
Right, and so I just want to make sure the language following this is acknowledging, you know, that it's not just.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Done through REBA or dispute resolution, it could be.
It should say executive director of REBA or, or whatever.
Or other qualified dispute resolution organization.
We can fix that, that's no problem.
And that was it.
And the, the attachment, the fee schedule.
Oh, the attachment, yeah. So, and we had no problems with the attachment. We were fine with this.
Amy, I'm wondering, when you have time, can you send another version that has the comments in it? Because I'm in the Word document, and there's no comments.
So I sent over two documents.
I have a PDF version and a Word doc, document.
No, I sent two Word documents on Wednesday, the 3rd at 5:00. And one of them has, one of them has all of my comments accepted, and then Paul's comments added in, but the other one has my comments. And that should have all the, that should have all of the comments in it.
Okay, was it sent more than once?
Sue, I forwarded it, Sue, but I'll send it again tomorrow.
All right, I must, then I must, keep going, ignore me.
I have a question on exhibit A.
Okay, go ahead, Jim.
The, the wording here is the sum of the aggregate square footage of all the units in the subdivision after reducing the square footage of each affordable unit by 30% to produce a revised aggregate square footage. When you're talking units here, I assume they're talking, or intend to mean, the dwelling unit.
Correct.
I guess, just reading this, it could be read either way, where it could either be, you know, is a unit a lot, or is a unit the, the actual dwelling?
So, so that's a very good question. I guess we would do the individual lot, right? Yes, because the individual lot is individual, so that would be akin to a condominium unit. So it would not include the, the easement areas. So on that plan that's in yellow, where they show, where he shows all the easement area, I have it right here, this plan, it wouldn't include what's in yellow. But you're right, Jim, it would, it should include all of the lots, so people with larger lots wouldn't, yeah.
Well, you could end up with somebody with a larger lot and a smaller house, square footage wise on it. Typically, these are done by, based upon the square footage of the dwelling unit.
Because normally, it's condominiums where everything except for in-your-walls is common area, but that's not the case here. So it's up to you guys, how you want to figure that out.
Well, in the past, we've done square footage of the house. I don't know, the easement now, for those that have long pipes and so forth, that land still belongs to them, even though it's an easement, and even though it's in yellow, right?
It does. They own it in fee, and then they have an easement over that fee.
Right, so if you have pipe going way out back, you're going to have a much larger lot, even though you really can't use it.
Right. So that's why we would either do the square footage of the dwelling, or the square footage of the lot minus anything in yellow. So whatever your lot is, minus what's in yellow.
Minus any easement, right?
Yeah, yeah.
We're fine with either approach. I think that the dwelling unit size is probably the easier to follow, but we're, we'll, we'll do whatever the board wants.
And this would ensure that the affordable units would only be paying 70%, correct, Amy?
Yes, I took this directly from what, what I was given by you guys, so yes.
Okay, I would also suggest that we go with the dwelling units, which, which of course, now we run into the question of, is that square footage living space, or is that the square footage of all improvements on the land, or, you know, how do we want to word that?
It would be square footage of the unit, which would not mean, which would not live in it to living, to living space. So it would be square footage of the unit, it would be a footprint. Because we wouldn't be doing gross floor area or anything like that.
What if somebody added a second story?
They're all two stories at this point, so somebody would have to add a third story. So.
And if they did, that would change their percentage.
Yeah.
And they wouldn't be able to do it without coming back to the board for a modification anyways. But if they were to do that, that would increase the percentage.
How did you guys do it?
Suggested going with the floor area is probably the better way to go, because otherwise, you know, if they did add on to the house, their percentage wouldn't change if it was based on lot area.
So it should be, it should be dwelling unit floor area, is what it should say. It should say, square footage of the, no, it should say.
Or footage of the floor area of all the dwelling units.
Square footage of the main structure.
Yeah, the aggregate floor area.
Excuse me?
Square footage.
Hello?
Yeah, Mark, we can hear you.
The ceiling joists in all the units are 2x8, so they don't accommodate any future square footage in the, on the third floor.
I missed last words.
It's not, it's not another project. It's not like another project.
We just got to figure out the wording for this, and.
Okay.
If we use, you know, if we use the total square footage of the floor area of, you know.
Of the dwelling.
Of the dwelling, then I think, you know.
Yeah, and that would cover if they built over the garage or something, now.
Or if they added on a sunroom or something.
Right. Increase the footprint, which I can't imagine they would get a permit to do, but one never knows. Do any board members have any questions about the changes that have been made so far?
Do we have to be concerned with potential addition renovation that would add a bedroom?
Only if it increases the floor area the way we're, we're looking right now, but this is probably something we could work out later, Amy?
Yeah, I think that Attorney Haberty is correct. Any change has to come back to this board. So at that time, we could require that this document be revised.
Should it say so in the document that any increase in the living area or something like that requires them to come back to the ZBA?
It's probably better to have it in whatever decision the board issues.
Both places, yeah.
And we can be very direct. Any other board member have another question? Amy, on behalf of the board, I'd like to thank you. I think you went above and beyond because I think it's really up to the petitioner to do this, but I thank you for saving us some time by going through it with them.
You're welcome, Madam Chairwoman. Could we go back to, back to page 11, 5.6? So, okay, here we go. So this is, this, this goes through, you know, the common elements are in one, and then it says that the owners shall bear and have a joint, and have joint responsibilities and obligations for any general maintenance and upkeep of the common elements and any associated infrastructure and other utilities. But then it says that all septic systems shall be inspected annually. Any deficiencies in noted, maybe noted, during system inspections shall be remedied by the property owner. So I thought that there was a concern about the septic system inspections by this board, and I thought that maybe that was supposed to be a common element task to ensure that A, it gets done yearly, which although we know it's required, we also know that people don't always do that. Sorry, sorry. So we know it's required, but people don't always do it. And then also, you know, I do think that if a septic system has an issue, I do think that that is on the, on the homeowner, whether affordable or not. I think that that's okay. But I think it's the main, I wasn't sure about the septic system testing, if you guys wanted that within the common element fees or not.
That was the board's request, that the Homeowners Association assume the annual cost for having them all done. There were two thoughts. One was that doing it in the aggregate may make it cheaper, and number two, that it would be the responsibility of the Homeowners Association to report to the Board of Health.
Right, so, so I think that the change most likely reflected that. I wasn't sure, which is why I flagged it.
I think it could be clearer, Amy.
Yeah, so I just think that we need to say.
Probably state that the Homeowners Association shall be responsible for ensuring that the systems are inspected annually.
Exactly, something like that. That's all I wanted to make sure of.
And reported to the Berlin Board of Health.
Yep. Yep.
Now, does that give teeth to the Homeowners Association to do the testing if the owner fails to do so?
No, it's going to be part of the common elements, so it's going to happen all at once. So the homeowners are going to send out an email to all of the owners and say, on June 1st, the, the systems are being tested. And then it gets sent to the Board of Health.
Did we find out which units are the affordable units?
That would be Mr. Rhodes.
No, I didn't realize, I thought we had done that prior.
We had. Prior to the modification, we had designated them.
And those are still the same designations?
We haven't changed anything, no.
Okay. Do, do any of the affordable? Do, do any of the affordables have a long track to theirs? Uh, well, or septic system, uh, to their well? I think the septic systems are all in the yard, right?
Yes.
Who's bearing the brunt of the longest, um, water truck?
Good evening, board members. I'm actually looking at the prior plan that you approved, and we had designated uh, unit one, which is the one closest to South Street. And then, uh, unit six and unit twelve as the affordable units.
Can you share your screen?
Yeah. Is that all right, board members?
Yes.
Yes.
So I'm going to share the original approved plan first. Okay, so hopefully. Is that visible to everybody?
Yep.
Yes.
Great. So unit one is here.
So that's one of the longest ones, right?
Uh, it, it is a longer one. Unit six and unit twelve. And then if you'd like, I can put the utility plan up and we can, uh, compare that with the current layout. Give one moment, please.
One of the things that occurred to me too, Amy, is it says as per the drawing or as per whatever. Could we put a date in there? At least a revision date, because there's two or three plans floating around and make sure that we're all talking about the revised as of one.
You're right. So, um, Seth, can you send me the dates of the revised, the most updated plans?
Yeah, so a- actually, the, the cover sheet has been tabulating those, so every much, so I'll give you a fresh cover sheet and that, that has everything for it.
Okay, great.
And I'm going to share my screen again that has the current layout, so hopefully that answers your question. So unit one, this is one of the affordables. And we had unit six, which is an affordable and as well as in this corner. And unit twelve, which has a well in this corner.
All three of them have a pretty good run.
Yes. That, that's correct. So that the, there's three lots that have wells directly behind their house. The, the rest of the development, the other nine units have a, a similar well run length.
Well, I don't think any is quite as long as number one, right?
Excuse me. Can you, uh, let the board know that a horizontal run doesn't impact the size of the well pump? It's, it's, it's how far you pump up.
It's correct. The, the, the pumps are sized by the lift, which is in this case, all the wells are going to be in equal depth, we're assuming, a couple hundred feet.
But the maintenance purposes, it could possibly be more expensive if you have to dig up that pipe.
Uh, truthfully, the, like I said, three quarters of the unit are all dealing with the same situation. So there's only three houses that have a well right behind them, which, which are much closer than most houses in Berlin.
All right, we'll, we'll, we'll take another look at that. So Amy, um, there's still a couple of things that need revision. Is that it?
Um, a- at this point, Madam Chair, yes, um, minor revisions, um, which your, your decision, um, will require that, um, that I review and approve of the homeowners association documents. Um, that's in the, that's in prior decision that will be, also be in this decision because of the fact that, you know, amendments to the HOA were part of the modification. And so you definitely have that within your purview to allow those changes to be made. So, um, I think that unless the board has, um, any other, you know, issues or, or concerns that they want to bring up. Um, I think we're at the point now where we need to determine if, um, the applicant is going to close the hearing or, um, continue the hearing to discuss a draft decision. Um, which would be at your next hearing. Um, if the, if the applicant closes the hearing, then, um, we still have forty days to draft our decision, so we would be discussing it at the next hearing in any event. So, um, I mean, unless people have a, a different, uh, plan, of course, of action, but that's where I think we're heading.
Comments from any of the board members?
Do we need to keep the meeting open to review any current, anything you're going to, you know, from tonight that you're going to finalize?
No, I, no, the, um, the, the changes that are made that I'm making are, are pretty definitive. And they're basically confirmatory changes, so not, that's not an issue. If we close the hearing tonight, we're back in the situation we were in way back when in the beginning, when um, we're going to make a decision and they're going to have absolutely no say. So if we have a question about something, we cannot ask that question or a clarification, you know, et cetera. So, um, but, you know, that's where we would be.
Where we, are we in terms of, um, the limitations?
Um, when we, if we close the hearing, we have forty days to file.
If we close the hearing or if we leave it open until next month, have we exceeded the, um, time period?
No, not with the, um, not with the.
Forty days didn't start running until December second.
Yeah, so the, um, chapter two oh one of the acts of, of twenty twenty pushed everything to start at December first, so.
Okay, does there anybody have any feeling about closing the hearing or wanting to be able to address any issues or obtain further information if we have more questions after the final document is created?
Excuse me, Madam Chair?
Yes, Mark.
If we were not to, uh, this is, I defer to Paul and Amy. If we were not to close the hearing tonight, would the two of them be able to work on a draft decision that we would review next month?
Yes.
Yeah, but to be quite honest with you, Mark, um, I don't know that, I mean, I appreciate Amy doing this, but I don't know that it's Amy's job. I mean, it's our job, it's our job to give, um, our comments to, uh, you folks. And then for you to come back with what you feel addresses them. From some frustration last time, um, Amy agreed to work with um, your counsel to see if they could, you know, iron out some of the um, questions that we had that hadn't been addressed during the previous month.
But what, what Amy's saying is if the hearings close and there's any question on the draft, she's unable to discuss it if the hearings closed.
We're unable, we're unable to take any information from you folks. Right.
So, Mark, my recommendation would be to request the board to leave the hearing open so that we can have feedback into the draft decision.
So, so Madam Chair, we will be, um, ultimately issuing a, a decision. Um, while it's a decision on a modification, it's a decision on a substantial modification. So, um, you know, I don't want anybody to panic. It's not going to be the decision that we issued before, you know, which was what, thirty something pages, but, but it is, we, we want to make sure that we cover everything. Um, and due to the fact that, um, you know, we've been thrown into this whole COVID situation and you know, uh, half of my file is at my office, the other half is literally under my bed. So, you know, I, I would appreciate being able to work with Attorney Haverty um, on drafting the decision in case I need references, like, like, for example, Seth is going to get me, you know, the plan references. If we close the hearing tonight, Seth can't get me the plan references, unfortunately. I'd have to, I'd have to go find them.
Right. And one of the other things too is we need to look at those plans because now he's showing us the original plan that shows us the pipe layout. It's got one date. And now we're coming in with a new one to, I mean, I just think there should be one final plan with an update on it that can be referred to in the, um, draft of the decision.
Correct, and that will be provided in his, in his cover sheet. He will have the original date and then all of the revisions. So we will use something such as, you know, planned dated X, Y, Z, last updated. And then the new date. So we will have a complete plan set.
How does the rest of the board feel?
Can I make a motion?
At any point in time, any member can make a motion.
Okay.
Yes.
Excuse me, Lynn. Mr. Minnick is in the, uh, the audience and he has his hand up.
Okay, how about if we listen to Mr. Minnick first and then we can proceed? Could you promote him, Keith?
Yep. Go ahead, Mr. Minnick. We can hear you.
Hello, uh, thank you for, um, listening, but, um, I, I had a few questions about, um, the HOA document and one of them had to do with section two, uh, two point one and two point two. And there was no, no m- mention of maintenance of the fencing that is, is on the, uh, plan um, on the landscaping plan. And I, I would assume that the fencing would be part of the maintenance responsibility of the HOA. That's one question. Under article five, section five point six, it's another area where I think it should be mentioned. The fencing, uh, maintenance should be mentioned. And article seven, section seven point one and seven point two. For me, I can't understand, um, in, in, in my terms, understanding uh, what conditions the trust can be changed or terminated, and, and layman's terms. I, I just don't understand that. And the last thing that I have is, is on the landscaping drawing, there's no, no definition of what kind of fence it's going to be that I could see. So I'd like that defined. That's all I have to say.
Mr. Haverty, do you have any comments?
Well, certainly we are, we have no problem revise the homeowners association to make it clear that that includes the requirement to maintain the fencing. With regards to the other comments, I don't know, Seth, did you have any input on that?
Yes, the fence, Mr. Rhodes actually offered to install that for the benefit of the butter and the fence is unchanged from the original permit that the board issued. So that, that's actually detailed on the sheets and when I send Amy over the list of sheets, um, it'll be clear. There's a specific.
But I, but I think he's talking about maintenance of the fence. And while we're at it, maintenance of the landscaping, uh, the buffer area.
Right, so, so Mr. Minnick is correct. We, um, we do have the fact that the landscape, that the landscaping and the screening is responsible. That's the home, um, the trust responsibility. Um, we did not put in the fence, which we can do. Um, and then, um, I don't know, Seth, I don't know if you recall, but I seem to, and I don't have it in front of me, but I seem to recall that the original decision actually stated what kind of fence it would be.
I, I believe it was a white vinyl fence.
Yeah, so, so, um, that, that's already in the decision, so that can also be put into this document without an issue, without issue.
Did you have anything else, Mr. Minnick?
The only, the only question I, I had too was the timing of when the fencing would be put up. It's because it's for a buffer and it would help me greatly if it could be done before the major, um, before developments really started, that, that fence would help me. If it could be done right away, before you do all the, all the trucking and all of the other stuff that's being done. In other words, have it not at the end of the project, but at the very beginning.
Mr. Rhodes, is that an issue?
That's not an issue.
So you have no problem with the fencing going up before work is begun on the first unit?
The fencing will go up prior to work on the first unit.
Will you make note of that, Amy?
Yeah, that would be an appropriate condition.
Right, and we can make that a, a condition of the, um, of the modified, or the modification decision. However, um, so it appears that what I heard Mr. Minnick say was that, um, before the trucking, et cetera, um, which would happen way before the first unit goes up. So I just want to be clear about the timing. Do we want, and I, and I want to be clear with Mr. Rhodes that he can install a fence prior to grading and clearing of the lot.
I could install the fence after I get the final approval from the state and secure my financing prior construction of the roadway.
Okay, so prior to any, any construction on site.
Right, does it require grading and, and
I don't know.
mobile and things of that nature to be able to, to install the fence? I think that's what you're asking.
The grade along there is going to stay the way it is. There's no change in grade. So there's, there's only one rub in the way that's invasive species. And, uh, maybe some trimming of some branches on some maple trees, but other than that, the grade's going to stay the way it is and the, and the soil is fantastic, so it's easily, easily installed.
What is the height of the fence?
Six is all that's allowed by code.
Um, seven is allowed by code now, but I don't know about the local, but under state building code, it's seven.
Yeah, seven is not a standard sized fence, so it would be six.
Does that answer your questions, Mr. Minnick?
It, it does, um, and I appreciate, um, that. And the other question that I did bring up, and I don't know how, how you would answer it, is I, I don't understand what conditions the trust can be changed or terminated. Uh, I read it a couple times, sections seven, seven point one and seven point two, but it's not clear to me what it means. In other words, what conditions can the trust be changed or terminated?
My understanding, Amy, is that it would take the approval of the ZBA. Is that correct?
Correct. It would take a unanimous vote of the homeowners and then a majority vote of the ZBA.
Terrific. That takes care of my questions. Thank you. I appreciate the time.
Thank you for your comments. They were helpful. Um, Amy, one of, um, the other, uh, concerns was having a, um, member from the affordable units on the Board of Directors. Um, and it says, well, unless no one is willing to serve. Um, is there any way to make sure that that's an annual, um, review? In other words.
Yep, so that you have to check in every year to see if somebody's willing.
So if nobody's willing upfront.
Yep.
You know, when there's only three homeowners or something. Maybe the next year there is and the following year there is.
Yep, we can put that in.
Thank you. Anybody have anything else? Okay, so we're looking for you, Amy, to draft a final decision. Is that it? And we want to keep the meeting open in order for you to be able to communicate, um, with the petitioner and counsel, et cetera. Is that correct?
Say yes, Amy.
All right, I'm, yes.
It is, it is the suggestion of the petitioner, and I'm asking for your opinion. We continue this until next month, knowing that there will be, um, a final draft of the decision available to us at that time.
Liberated, yes. And it will be deliberated by the board, yes.
Is there, but we'll leave it open so that communication can continue between yourself and Mr. Haverty at all. Anyone have a question about that? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we continue the hearing for the Capes of Berlin to the March tenth meeting at six P M.
At six P M? Is that okay, March? Is that okay, March 10th at 6:00 PM? Is that what you're saying, Jim?
Yes.
Is there a second?
I will second.
Okay, that was, who seconded it?
Jenny, Virginia.
Okay. Okay, there's a motion made and seconded to continue the hearing at the request of the board and the petitioner to March 10th at 6:00 PM. I'll make a roll call vote. I'm going to take all, I think there's seven of us here. Of course, recording will be five. I'm an I. Jim?
Aye.
Let's see, Jenny?
Aye.
Madam Chair, did you get a motion and a second on that?
Yes.
Yes, Virginia seconded it.
Sorry, I missed it.
All right, I'm sorry, I, Jim is an I, Jenny is an I, Keith?
Aye.
Susanna? Jenny?
Aye.
And Pat?
Aye.
Okay, we have a unanimous vote to continue the hearing until March 10th. I thank you all.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you all for your time.
Have a good night.
See you in 28 days.
Great, thank you.
Okay, do we have the folks for the special permit for the in-law apartment at 157 Lyman Road?
What's their number? What's their name? We have, we had.
No, I don't see any, but I don't see them, Lynn.
They were here a minute ago and just left.
Was it Benedict's? That last name was Albert.
It was their first names, Elizabeth and something.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Minnick is requesting to speak again.
Mr. Minnick, as long as it has nothing to do with the Capes of Berlin, other than a request for information. Please recognize him. You're muted, Mr. Minnick. There we go.
Yeah, hi, I was, I was just going to ask if I could get a copy of the comprehensive permit that I'm assuming is, is complete at this point. I just would like a copy of it. How do I get it?
Well, they're in the process of completing it. It'll be available for the next meeting.
Oh, okay.
When the board gets, when, when the board gets it, you'll get it. How's that?
That's perfect, and I thank you, and I won't bother you anymore. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. So we don't have Mr. Albert on there?
Not here right now, no.
No.
We have Janet Lamy, Peter Hoffman, and Peter Wheeler.
If they do rejoin, Lynn, I can, I just want to confirm upfront that they did contact the abutters and advertisement and paper and by the deadline dates.
We have an Elizabeth and Benedict here.
Yep, they just rejoined.
Is that, should I promote them, or do we know who that is? Yep.
Yes, that's them.
Okay, I'm promoting to panelists here. Elizabeth and Benedict, there they are. You have to unmute your microphone.
Yes, hi, thank you.
Okay, given that proper notice has been given and concerned by Leanne, I'll open the hearing for the petition for an in-law apartment at 157 Lyman Road. Okay, our normal procedure is to let the petitioners make a presentation if you wish. You want to tell us what you're going to do and?
Well, this is a kind of a life plan for us. My father passed away, it'll be four years ago now in October. And it was part of my mother and father's life plan to sell their current residence on Gates Pond Road anyway. And my husband generously put forth the idea that we combine two houses into one. So we would like to make that dream a reality.
All right, let me just get my funk and wagmills here and we'll go through. I know you've been working with the building inspector to assure that you're within the percentages that are necessary.
Yes.
So we will probably just put that in the decision that you have to stay within the 35%. Is the building constructed or under construction or?
It's under construction. Right now, the frame is up, including the roof.
Oh, wow. So you have yourself a shell, do you?
Yes.
Yes, we do.
We were given a temporary permit pending ZBA coming back together, six, six months ago, I think, by the building inspector. And the only contingency at the time is that we couldn't construct a final working in-law kitchen.
Right. You could do the bedroom, the sitting room, whatever, but you could not designate any of the rooms, so forth. How about border health, or are there any other issues, conservation?
Everybody signed off.
Everybody signed off, yeah.
And there was no issues with anybody else involved.
Okay, I'm just looking at the bylaw here for in-law apartments. You don't have any problem with making it look like a one family? I take it that the apartment's going to be on the bottom level?
Yes.
It's actually left and right.
Okay, and you would, you would be restricted to, I'm sure you, you've read the Article 5 of the bylaw, have you not?
Yes.
And you understand that it has to be owner occupied and the in-law is limited to no more than three persons. You're looking for one. The outside appearance of the premises shall remain that of a single family residence, all applicable federal, state, yada, yada. There must be no other in-law apartment or accessory apartment on the same site. And you do need a special permit. We usually make these contingent on a five-year renewal. The reason we do that is sometimes people come in for an in-law apartment and they end up renting it out as an apartment. So when you see that it has a cap, but is renewable after five years, it's just a case of you come back in five years and you, you know, the plans are the same. You just state who's living there, et cetera. Does that make sense to you? To prevent it from being an outright to prevent it from being an outright apartment. Anyone else have any questions?
You can hardly see the house from the road, so there, there'd be no question of who's out there.
So does anyone have anything else?
No, I would like a copy of the application. I couldn't download the one that we had.
I can get that to you, Sue. I can, I'll leave it in the outer lobby. You can pick it up.
Thank you.
So you worked hard for this permit or to have the board vote on the permit? But I'm glad we didn't hinder you from going ahead. I mean, COVID probably did, but we didn't hinder you from going ahead and doing construction.
Correct.
If nobody has anything else, entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the permit for an in-law apartment for a period of five years, at which point it would be renewable.
Subject to the provisions of the bylaw, correct?
Correct.
All right, the motion was made by whom?
Jim.
And it was seconded by Jenny? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, I'll take a roll call vote. I'm an I. Jenny?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Keith?
Aye.
Susanna?
Aye.
Jenny?
Muted.
Jenny?
Jenny, you're muted, sorry.
It looked like an I.
I can read lips. She said I.
Okay, and Pat?
Aye.
Okay, you have your permit. You understand that. I'm slow. So within the next couple of weeks, I'll write a decision, and especially now with COVID, it's difficult getting all the signatures that we need on it. Once it's filed with the town clerk, it has to sit there for, well, first of all, they send a copy of the decision to the abutters. And then it sits, has to sit there for 20 days, waiting for someone to appeal it.
Yeah.
At that, I mean, that doesn't mean you can't go ahead and do something. It just means that you're in jeopardy of having to undo it. And at the end of the 20 days, you'll get validation, you'll get a separate sheet. Now, you, you'll get a copy of the decision and the permit, but there's also a sheet that you need to record in the registry of deeds.
Okay.
That gives you permission for the apartment. So I thank you very much. This was a very nice and brief. And.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
As long as you stay within the parameters, you will see things like, you know, complying with the border health, et cetera. All, all other boards, you've already done that, so you don't have an issue there, and that would be up to the building inspector to be sure of that.
Excellent.
Okay, entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Close the hearing.
I just, who was that that moved it? Jim? And Jenny seconded, boy, you are quite a team tonight. I'll go around, are those in favor? I'm an I. Jenny?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Keith?
Aye.
Susanna?
Aye.
Jenny, who's muted, wave if you're an I. Jenny, wave if you're an I.
Aye.
All right, thank you, folks.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, we've got a few minutes. You said you did minutes, right?
Yes.
Yep, we did do minutes.
Do we have anything else? Everybody available for March 10th?
I am.
Is there anyone who's not available March 10th? Okay. We don't, we did the minutes. We don't have any warrants. We don't have any. Is there any questions or anything that's come before the board that they'd like to ask now? Okay. Have you heard anything from the petitioner for our next hearing, Leanne?
Just the letter that he submitted the other day that I forwarded to the board.
Okay.
I wasn't surprised to get that letter.
But we still need to act.
Right.
Okay.
Did you get a copy of that letter, Lynn?
Yes.
Okay, because first it was an email, but then he came back the next day with a letter. Which I did send out to the board.
I'll have somebody read it into the record anyway, just if there's anyone listed.
Do you have that? You could screen share and or read into the record.
I don't.
I'll, I'll let the screen sharing go to somebody else, like Keith.
Yeah, I was just asking Keith if he had.
I don't have it right here.
Okay, but we can't start till 7:30.
Right, Keith, I'm sending it, I'm forwarding it to you right now.
Does anyone want Keith to post the letter now?
I have to send it to him first.
Oh, okay.
All right.
Because that's public information, as long as we don't discuss it, posting it would be fine and will save us a few minutes after we open the hearing. Nobody from C3 is here, right?
I don't think they're here yet. Where did it go?
I know, I saw it a minute ago too, and I can't find it now.
Well, I just downloaded it.
I have a copy of.
Oh, here it is.
The withdrawal letter?
Keith, I just sent it to you. I mean, I can read it, but if you want.
I'd share it, but I don't know how. I can't even seem to keep unmuting myself.
I can't share it, but I can read it.
Jenny, your character.
Did you send it to me? It's not here.
I, I just sent it from the ZBA email.
I haven't, I didn't get it yet.
Slow service tonight.
Well, that's good, that we have a couple of minutes that we can get it to you.
Might have the original one. It's just the withdrawal letter from 64 Banner?
Yep, right.
All right, I can do that.
Anybody have any exciting news for us?
Yep, there it is. Exciting news? No.
Is that good? You want me to keep sharing or?
Can everybody read that?
Yeah.
Yeah. Did this go to the town clerk, Leanne?
No, it hasn't gone anywhere except to the board.
Okay, could I trouble you tomorrow after we vote on it? To forward it to the town clerk and state what we, how we voted?
What's, what's next? What are we waiting for?
We have to wait till 7:30 to open the hearing that we continued from last month. Because there's a time specific on our agenda and we also continued it, continued it to a time certain. It's a pain in the neck, but it's just if we were to do something now and then somebody else come on and complain about something that, you know, they weren't privy to the discussion of the board because they weren't there at 7:15 because it was supposed to be at 7:30. So it's good practice to not start something until the start time is there. See, Pat, you're, you were all set, you know?
I was.
Well, for this hearing that you didn't want to do.
I guess she wants to recuse herself. Make sure you recuse yourself right at the beginning, Pat.
Yep.
Well, she really wants to absence herself because recused means there's a reason. The only reason is she's exhausted. We've worn her out. We've worn her out. So we're not going to have a town meeting until May, eh? Is that the word, Leanne?
That's the word.
Suzanne, we'll have to get together and just, yes.
Did you see the email that I forwarded to you from Conservation Commission? They want to come before the board to discuss their proposal for their changes, let me find the email.
Well, we can vote to put them on the we can vote to put them on the agenda for next month.
Okay. Just trying to find.
Which board is it?
Conservation bylaws, they're trying to put through a new group of bylaws.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, bylaw, municipal wetland bylaws, they want to make some changes, and they asked to
Want our input. It makes good reading material.
So, yeah, Chairman Amy asked if, could I please be given the opportunity to present the bylaw informally at an upcoming ZBA meeting?
Okay, well, we can vote to put them on the agenda, but remind us before we leave you.
Okay.
Actually, we could do that now.
You could do it now while we're reading.
Okay, so we have Capes of Berlin coming back at 6. And then we have, we shouldn't have anything, so how about if we do 7? I think we need an hour for Capes of Berlin, do you guys think so?
Yeah, it's probably about right.
Because we're going to do the final thing next month too, right?
Right. Let's see if we can wrap it up. Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to add the request of the Conservation Commission to meet with us at 7 o'clock on March 10.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, so Pat moved it, and Ginny, you seconded it? I'll go around for a vote, Jenny?
Aye.
Jim?
Yes.
Keith? Is among the missing, Susanna?
Sure.
Ginny?
Yes.
And Pat?
Yes.
And we'll leave Keith off of the voting, because he's abandoned us. Everybody has that conservation, you sent that out to everybody, right, Leanne?
Yeah.
I did, I can send it again, anybody needs it.
Do you care to vote, Keith?
On what?
Just say aye.
Aye.
Oh, he's a trusting soul, isn't he? This was to put the Conservation Commission on the agenda next month for 7:00 PM.
Well, I'm looking forward to that.
Oh, I bet you are. Okay, so everybody has a copy of, and can look at the revisions, right? Is there anyone who doesn't, or discarded it, or wants another copy?
I actually have a copy on this one.
You did, Susanna?
I got it, yes.
Oh, good, and you can read it, right?
At the moment, no, but yes.
Oh, it's the longest, 15 minutes.
I'll be right back.
Thanks for the warning.
I want kitten animation thing for Zoom.
Oh, like the lawyer hat?
Yes.
Is he going in front of the Supreme Court or something?
Oh, wasn't that funny? Oh, that was so cute. And, and the three of them were just so stoic, you know, the judge, the other lawyer and him. It was like, this was a commonplace, and now, let me give you technical assistance on how to take the filter. I think the judge says, I think you have a filter on there. Did everybody see that?
No.
I didn't.
Oh, it was, it was a court case, and there was a judge and two opposing lawyers, it appeared. One of the lawyers was, they had a filter on the Zoom, and the lawyer appeared to be a cat. And the cat's mouth, and the cat's mouth actually moved when he spoke, okay?
And his eyes moved, oh my God, that was hysterical, I did see it, Lynn.
Yeah. And then, he was using, I guess, the computer of his secretary. His 10-year-old daughter had put that on Zoom for herself.
No, actually, I was reading about this, it was, it was a leftover, it was an old Dell computer, and it was some app that the Dell computer had, and Zoom, that's why they couldn't take it off of Zoom, because it wasn't happening.
He did get it off, though.
Yeah, eventually, yeah.
We could do that for our next meeting, we could
I know, I'm researching now, I want to do that.
I want to, I want to be a hound.
I would think one of you would want to be a horse. They'd be like, like Mr. Red, you know? It is intriguing that people can do that, though, isn't it?
It's really cute, too, I mean, to see the cat talking. It made you smile, I mean, it was
Yeah, and the eyes rolling.
Yeah, the eyes moving, oh God, yeah.
And right in, right in tune with his voice.
Right, right.
I just couldn't believe they, they all stayed so stoic.
Oh my God, it was funny, I am not a cat, I am not a cat.
I think, I think it's a filter. Okay.
One more minute. 7:20.
If everybody's here, I'm going to say it's 7:30.
We, we do have two people in the audience, in addition to Peter Hoffman.
Okay, and who's that?
Brian Falk and Ankar Runkta?
Yeah, that's the petitioner and counsel.
You'd like me to promote them?
You can promote them. I'll declare the continuation of the public hearing for site plan approval and special permit for retail marijuana at 64 Banner Road. Is there anything that Mr. Falk would like to say? Or Mr. Runkta?
Yeah, I, thank you, Madam Chair, did you receive the letter that I had submitted to withdraw our petition?
We did.
Great, so we would like to request that withdrawal at this time.
Okay. So, I'll entertain a motion that the petitioner be allowed to withdraw his petition without prejudice. With someone, he had to make that motion, Jim Royer made that motion, is there a second?
I second it.
And Keith seconded, I'll take a roll call, I'm an I, Jim?
Aye.
Keith?
Aye.
Susanna?
Aye.
Ginny?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
And Leanne, I'm Leanne, yep. I think that's it. Jenny, did I get you?
Aye.
Okay. So the vote is unanimous, is there anything you care to share with us, Mr. Runkta? Is this still a possibility, or are you looking elsewhere?
I, I think we are still trying to figure out a way to make it work, but I think it's unlikely that it will. And so we'll continue to try to find a path forward, but we would need some zoning changes to occur on the Marlboro side, and it's hard for me to, to say how likely that is to happen, so. So, yeah, I think at this time, it's, it's unlikely that we'll be able to proceed with this site.
Okay, thank you for your candor, and thank you for withdrawing your petition and not letting it languish for a couple of months, I appreciate that, and I'm sure the board does. And thank you, Mr. Falk.
You.
We all learned something about our neighbors.
Yeah, thank you so much, Chair, thank you for your consideration, appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
I'll second.
And Ginny second, I, Jenny?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Keith?
Aye.
Susanna?
Aye.
Ginny?
Aye.
And Pat?
Aye.
And I think I said I'm an I, thank you, gentlemen. Mr. Hoffman, I saw in the audience, is there anything that he would like to say to us?
We now have Peg, I assume is Peg Stone, and Peter Hoffman.
Okay. Would either of them want to raise their hands, or whatever, if they want to say anything to us?
If they don't, I have a question, Lynn.
Okay.
And again, this is in reference to the property down there.
Yes.
Has there been any checking into the occupants of the building? The site at 64 Banner?
I believe the building inspector is aware of it, and it's up to him whether or not it will be pursued. It's beyond our purview. But I
Peg did raise her hand, and she is promoted and unmuted, so we can hear you, Peg.
Thanks, all. Lynn, quick question for you, and I don't know if it's more of a question for Amy in regard to access to the property at the Banner Road, I mean, I know that you really can't build an alternative road in because you're crossing wetlands, but what if, similar to what Tempsicle did for Hudson, can you have some type of shuttle with maybe parking at the community garden? And have folks drop their car off, get in the bus, go down, come back on the bus?
My understanding from what Mr. Falk told us, and from the letter that we got from Council for Federal Digital Credit Union, that Marlboro has a bylaw that says you cannot transverse property zoned one way, to get to property zoned another way, by use of an easement.
Even though, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So they would not allow a marijuana retail in the zone in which the easement exists. Therefore, you can't use it to transverse that land to get to.
Okay, so even though the property sits solely in Berlin, because you have to use a Marlboro Road, you can't get there?
Because we have to use, right, because it's an easement over land that's zoned that does not allow a marijuana retail facility. And the city of Marlboro sent a letter, I don't know if you want them, I'm sure Leanne could send you a copy of them. And a letter from Attorney Falk, not Falk, what was his name for?
The other one was the letter from the building inspector, building commissioner in Marlboro, I don't recollect his name, but
I'm talking about Federal Credit Union, the other ones that really Okay, and they stated that they were opposed. And there were other questions too, Peg, one was to put a sign at the entrance to that right of way.
Right.
Digital Federal Credit Union basically said no. So, there was some concern that, how would they find that place?
All right, well, there's a sign at the end of Donald Lynch Boulevard that tells you that the pizza place is down the road, couldn't you put, is that Berlin property? Could you put a sign there that says, pull in, take your first left?
That isn't Berlin property.
It isn't Berlin property?
No.
No.
Now, really, the only way you could do this would be if he bought the lot behind where the community garden is, and then built some sort of footpath across the, the river there to get, to get access from that side.
I think they explored that, but they found it was going to be cost prohibitive, because that's all wetland.
Yeah.
And in order to put a bridge in there, this was a invention of Emerson Chandler way back when, believe it or not, I was on the board when Banner Door came about. And it was said that they had no frontage, which they didn't. So, he gave them frontage, and it went right over the Assabett River. But there was talk of maybe buying another piece of land, but even at that, they would have to cross wetlands, and I think they figured it'd take like three bridges or something.
Wow, yeah. Okay.
If conservation allowed it.
Right, and that, I mean, that was my only thought, is to get everybody in a bus, but if you can't get everybody in a bus.
Well, they wouldn't let them cross, you know, transverse that easement to get to the dispensary. So, that was the scoop there, Peg.
Okay, all right, that was the only idea that I could come up with, to try and get people down the road.
Yeah, they are, they are looking at other properties, from what I understand, in Berlin. For which I may have to attack the planning board, but
All right, well, that's too bad, that's too bad that Hudson, Hudson Marlboro, or Marlboro was doing this.
Right, is Mr. Hoffman still with us?
He is. And he just raised his hand.
Because I believe he's working with Marlboro on some other stuff. Would you care to speak to us, Mr. Hoffman?
And actually, the petitioner requested to speak as well, again, his hand is up.
Who's that, Keith?
The petitioner, no, he's gone.
No, he's not going.
There he is.
Hi, I'm back, I, I just thought I could help contribute to some of the discussion if it's, if it's helpful. But Peter, please go ahead if you'd like to say something first.
Well, Peg spoke about most of it, Ankar and I spoke, I introduced Ankar to the EDC in Marlboro. I think, I think, and Ankar, correct me if I'm wrong, the, the process to get the easement rezoned is complex, if possible, and will delay the project greatly, so it probably makes a bunch more sense for Ankar to look at other sites in and out of Berlin, unfortunately for us. Ankar's made a good stab at this, I think Marlboro's willing to, to talk to Ankar and, and they consider the, the issue, but it's, it's, it's time consuming.
Yeah, I think, yeah, thank you, Peter, I, I think that's right, I, I think the sense I'm getting that it'll be an uphill climb, I, I think with cannabis regulation, it's, it's always political, and there are always a lot of different considerations, so I, I think it would be challenging to get that, that zoning change to allow access through that easement. And then, regarding the conversation on trying to create access through River Road West, we did look at that, I think it's nearly impossible through the existing frontage that we have, as Chair Ryan mentioned, it, it crosses the river in multiple places. We did look at potentially trying We did look at potentially trying to build a road that would kind of hug the prop the town borderline with Marlboro that would cut more directly west. That would involve that would involve much less wetland and I don't think a crossing of the river would be required, but then that would bring into that play that Berlin Community Garden parcel because we would need to basically take a very narrow slice of the south end of that parcel to build that road. Candidly, it just felt like maybe that would be too complex to try to put together those pieces. But if, you know, if if if, you know, there was a path, it would probably be trying to build an access road to River Road West and doing it sort of along that that town borderline versus where the current frontage exists. So I don't know if anyone has any questions on that or any reactions to that I that thought.
So let me jump in and say that Ankur presented to the EDC many months ago. I've spoken with Ankur and he he and his organization have been tremendous professionals and it would be a welcome opportunity to have Ankur and his team here, whether it be cannabis or otherwise. So it's kind of a shame that this this project looks as at least right now that it might fail. But hopefully Ankur has got some ideas on some other Berlin property and maybe that'll develop into something.
Oh, thank you, Peter. I appreciate the kind words. I I am looking. I'll be honest with you. There there are, I think, very limited options when it comes to a site that's you know, that I think is well suited for this. The last thing I'd want to do is propose a site that that was uncomfortable for the community or not didn't provide. Another important thing I think is access. So so having access from, you know, a highway and from a commercial road, I think, is important. So so I'm going to look, but but candidly, I'm not I don't have anything identified right now and I'm not necessarily confident that there's anything that's jumping out as as a good backup site.
Well, you've been a pleasure to work with and we thank you. I just thought perhaps, Mr. Hoffman, I know that the EDC has been working with Marlboro EDC on resolving some issues around the mall and I didn't know if maybe his contacts there would have been able to sway something, but Marlboro is a very interesting place.
I made the introduction to Ankur and Meredith, the leader for the EDC. I made that introduction. But of course, it's up to the two of them to to parlay on that introduction. But I think, as I said earlier, I think the problem is that not only is it complex, it's time consuming and this project needs to get underway if Ankur is going to make any money.
Yeah, but brass tacks always has a role to play as well. But I I am talking to Meredith, Chair Ryan, and, you know, if anything comes out of that, that feels like there's forward movement with, then I'll certainly, you know, look to try to revive the project, but.
Well, we'll welcome you back if you decide to do that.
Great. Thank you again.
And and thanks to Peg for putting her two cents worth in and showing some interest.
Absolutely.
That's greatly appreciated.
I don't want to drive to Marlboro anymore. I'm selfish.
It'll it won't be long before Amazon delivers. Just relax.
You know, and the problem is, is that the more that you work towards the Hudson way, so, you know, like Taylor Road, you run into Tempsicle right over the line. And then about, I don't know, 750 feet further down the line, you have a brand new cannabis retail facility that pretty much opened up at the bottom of the lights by Market Basket. So, you know, you'd have competition on competition, you know, heading that way.
What I was surprised, Peg, is that I can remember when the first one opened there at the corner of Gates Bond Road and Route 62.
Yep, Tempsicle.
And they had shuttle buses because they've got very limited parking and they had detail officers and the place was packed, okay? Now you go by there and there's no one there. And you go by the new one. I forget its name there at the light by the Market Basket. And I didn't even know it was open. I mean, there's like one or two cars in the parking lot. And they built a good sized parking lot. So I've I've been surprised in the decline. Of course, the two of them are on top of each other, but.
Right, so that would be my only concern for Ankur to go that way towards Hudson is that you already have two establishments right there.
Yeah, Mr. Runk, you got to take a look, drive by those two places sometimes during the day or even during heavy traffic time, maybe Friday night or Saturday, and take a look at how desolate they seem.
Yeah, I'll do that, Chair Ryan. And I'm familiar with those two sites. And and the reality is the market is normalizing now. There are more of these businesses. It's no longer a novelty for everybody. So so it is more competitive and and so I think there's less traffic and some of those concerns that you saw in the beginning.
Okay, thank thank you very much. You've been a pleasure to work with and thank you, Mr. Hoffman, and thanks, Peg, for your thoughts.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
One of the things I wanted to mention to Suzanne was that we had some stuff we were doing for to ask the planning board to put on the agenda for the May town meeting. Now, I don't know how much more they're going to do, but we might, I mean, we can go as two and that wouldn't be a board. Want to go to a planning board meeting?
I can do that.
And talk about the changes we were suggesting?
Yes.
Does that make sense? Okay, well, we'll have to talk. Well, I'll look at the schedule and see when they're meeting and do it.
They meet the second and fourth Tuesday of the month.
Okay.
So that would be.
So their next meeting is that this month is the 23rd.
Okay. At 7:00 PM?
They start at 7:30.
Okay.
Do we need to go on the agenda or are they open to hearing from folks?
I'm not exactly sure. It wouldn't hurt to reach out to Tom Sanford is the chair. He's.
Who's the chair, Tom?
Tom Sanford, S.A.N.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Okay, we can talk, Susanna, and make sure we're both interested going on the 23rd. That looks like a good night for me, but.
Yeah, I put it in my schedule.
Okay. And we can ask them if we can get on their agenda just to or if we need to be on their agenda. Okay, is there anything else? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn and then we can talk about COVID and all sorts of stuff if you want to.
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, Jim made it. Keith seconded. This is a motion to adjourn. Denny?
Aye.
I'm an aye. Jim?
Aye.
Keith?
Aye.
Susanna?
Aye.
Ginny?
Aye.
Pat?